We had a little bit of technical difficulty with last week's meeting, town hall meeting that I had at noon. I recorded that meeting and that meeting goes to the district YouTube channel. And it's just S F S D official on YouTube. And for some reason, it took a little bit for last week's recorded meeting to get uploaded. But it is up there now and we've got a little bit better process in place so that we can take this meeting and get the, get the recording uploaded. So if families are not available yet tonight, then they can go to the recording. So we'll, we'll go ahead and get started. I have just kind of our standard agenda for this evening. Not a lot of updates from last week, but hopefully there's some new faces. Um, one thing that I did want to touch on first is introducing Nicole Morris. Nicole is our elementary secretary and office manager. Last week I was, I went back and watched some of the recording and last week I was calling for her and asking her to chime in. She was going to monitor my chat room, but because I had recently hired her, I actually failed to send her the invite. So it looked a little bit silly there, but she is on Nicole. Did you want to say a couple of words and introduce yourself?
Sure. Yeah. I like to apologize for not being in last week's meeting, but I am excited to be in this meeting since the evening. And just excited to meet all of you at some point. And I'm in their office now, starting this week. And so any questions or anything you have, feel free to give the school a call. I'm there to answer your questions and like to get to know all of you. And just want to do the best I can for you this year, being different and all, but just doing the best I can for y'all.
Awesome. Thanks Nicole. And then we also actually have Letty PD. Letty is our secretary that is actually the face that you'll see first when you come into the awesome office. So Letty, did you want to say hello to folks?
Hello, everyone. I am so excited to get this school year started. I'm going to be there. I think I start in a couple of weeks. I'll be in there and off and on and throughout these next couple of weeks, getting the registrations all entered. So everyone can start getting their emails and invites. So, so excited for the new school year. I know it's going to be a little different, but hang in there. Everything will hopefully be back to normal and by the new year or maybe next year, but fingers crossed.
Awesome. Thank you, Letty. Appreciate both you guys for being on and we, we spent a little bit of time kind of answering some questions and just kind of talking about some of the items that have come up, requests from parents, parents requesting some information, just kind of needing some help. So I think the gals are ready to serve you guys. So yeah, check in if you have questions, there's email contacts for them. Also, you can call the main office number, which is eight seven three, eight seven three, six, three, four, one. So give them a call and we're happy to help you guys. So we're going to jump in. I've got, like I said, I have kind of a stock agenda. Kind of our, our rules that we've been following in our, in our Google meets have been just if you can mute your microphones, which everybody I believe is doing that, feel free to leave the camera on. Sometimes I can see some of your, some of your kiddos in there. It's nice to see some faces, but totally up to you guys for this, for this meeting. If you have questions in the upper right-hand corner, at least on my screen, there's a, there's a message icon or a chat room icon. So feel free to put your questions in that box. Nicole is monitoring our chat room, so she's going to kind of keep me accountable there. If there's some questions kind of start to build up in there, she's going to interject and stop me and, and we'll, we'll read some of those questions and make sure we answer those as best we can. And then today, because I think our agenda is going to be a little bit light, I kind of wanted to go around the room so I can see some faces that I'm going to call on and just ask from your perspective. If you could give me kind of a parent perspective, how things are going at home, maybe what you guys anticipate or as some concerns or just maybe, you know, things that are on your mind in terms of your children coming to school. Please feel free to share those with the group. I would venture to say that a lot of those, a lot of those viewpoints are shared with other parents. So it'll be good to kind of share that perspective a little bit. We just want to again, want to, want to kind of open the lines of communication and be able to help as many families as possible. And again, we're going to, we're going to record this, so keep that in mind. And, and for any, any folks that didn't get a chance to see it, please encourage those folks to take a look at our YouTube channel. So I see Cedar there peeking his, peeking from behind his mom's shoulder. Hi Cedar, how are you today? Ah, I got a wave. Awesome. Awesome. Great to see you, buddy. Oh, there's some faces. I see some faces. I like it. Okay. Well, diving in, the first item that I have is just kind of confirming some dates for this upcoming school year. So class list is always a big topic, wanting to know in this year, it's going to be a little bit unique. Wanting to know what cohort students are in, who's your teacher, all of those, all of those questions. So Friday, August 28th, Friday, August 28th is kind of our targeted date that we're going to post class list or cohorts this year. I know some families have chosen online option. And, and so we will probably have a separate classroom where you know who your teacher is, that that is an online option that you have chosen. And just make sure that there's a, that there's a teacher and, and students are assigned to that teacher for that option. Cause we will look a little bit different this year. So that's kind of our plan. I do want to let folks know that as we get close to August 28th, we started at the end of last year, trying to make sure that, you know, we had our classrooms built. That process takes about two weeks. We try to make sure that we place all of our students with higher needs. We place some students who are maybe learning English as a second language. A number of, a number of factors go into placing, placing students as well as how they are performing. We like to try to get a nice balance or a nice blend. We try to make sure we pair up students who may have peers or classmates as supports. And then we always try to, you know, really do our best to match learning styles with, with teachers and personalities and things like that. So there's a lot that goes into that. We know that this year, based on choosing online or choosing hybrid, that there may be some imbalances prior to posting class lists. And so we are going to take probably about, you know, a week to a week and a half of 10 days before that August 28th and reconvene the teachers and really take a look at our classes and make sure that we balance out not only the class size or the cohort size, but also some of those requests. For example, families have said, hey, if we do go to hybrid, we're choosing hybrid. When we do get a chance to bring students into school, Tuesday, Thursday may not work for us because of our work schedule or because of our daycare situation, we'd like to request to go, you know, Wednesday, Friday. We're going to try to accommodate as many of those situations as we can. And so there will be a balancing of cohorts and classes prior to August 28th. So a lot of, a lot of things in motion there and we just want to make sure that we, you know, we get classes balanced. We get cohorts balanced and we can take care of the kids as best as possible. The second is teachers have a little bit unique start to the school year. Typically they have about four days of in-service where they get prepped for the, for a normal school year, let's call it. This year we have a very unique school year. And so we're going to have two weeks of in-service and trainings for the teachers. That two weeks begins August 31st and goes through September 11th. So teachers are going to be accustomed with a new curriculum that is Edge Newity, which is an online curriculum. It's brand new to the teachers. They're going to be training on that curriculum prior to the start of the school year. And then the first day of school for students is September 14th. The first nine weeks, it's already been predetermined that will be, that will be off-site or, or, or online. Obviously those folks that have, that have chosen that option, but families that have chosen the hybrid option, that, that, that will be basically at home. Hybrid is only when, the kids are only coming in when the state has approved us to have in-person schooling. And so everybody's going to be online or distance comprehensive distance learning from September 14th through November 13th. The other day to make you all aware of is the reevaluation date, which is October 5th. On October 5th, the school board is going to take a look at the metrics for the state and what the governor has set for us. And we're going to reevaluate if we can, we can have our hybrid students onsite in, in some capacity. So we're going to take a look at that and that actually is going to happen on August, or excuse me, that actually is going to happen on October 5th. Okay. Couple of other things I had referenced before. This recording as well as district-wide town halls and things like that. The Silver Falls School District has its own YouTube channel. You can subscribe to that channel, but all of our recordings get posted on that channel. You can find that channel at the district webpage. I also have, have made a post on our Mark Twain website. And so the YouTube channel can be found there. The second piece is I also put a post on our Mark Twain webpage about a home learning coach. We had referenced that last week in our town hall. And there's a one-page document that describes what it looks like to, to appoint or designate a home learning coach for your children. And basically that person is kind of a guide on the side or a point person to help keep our young students on track, on schedule and following along and making progress in the curriculum. And so there, take a look at that on our Mark Twain website, Home Learning Coach. There's a document that you can click on to take a look there. And then the last thing is Edge Newity. There's a, there's a link that just became available. I also posted that to our Mark Twain website and it's a parent and family resources site. And so if you click on that link, it'll take you to an Edge Newity site. And there's resources for parents. You can take a look at what to expect, some frequently asked questions. The district is going to continue to update that site. And that's going to be kind of our basic site to go to so for resources for parents as we kind of navigate this new online curriculum. So those are kind of some of the, some of the nuts and bolts, I guess, of the town hall for today. A lot of the information that I talked about last week is, is, is still relevant. I haven't received any updates. I know that ODE has put out some updated information, but we haven't made any decisions as a district on that yet. And so obviously you guys are well aware that this situation is very fluid. And, and I will continue to communicate with you guys. We're going to have town halls every week on Monday with alternating times of 12 o'clock noon for those folks that want to do a town hall at lunchtime, as well as 6 o'clock PM for those folks that want to do it in the evening. And then everything's going to be recorded. So next week on Monday, we'll, I'll be back here and providing hopefully some updates for everybody. But that one will be at 12 noon and I'll send that invite out and that reminder via the Parent Square app, which is the communication, the communication platform for the district. So with that being said, do we, Nicole, do we have any questions in the chat room?
Not yet. It's clear so far.
All right. Looks good. Well, I think what I wanted to do tonight, because we haven't, we haven't received a lot of information. I want to kind of turn this into a little bit more of a conversation. Last week we had some great questions. A couple of students actually asked some fantastic questions. So it was great to listen to them. And so I'm, I'm actually just going to kind of cold call on a few of you. I recognize a few names, so I'm just going to call the name that's on the screen. If you feel like you want to pass, please, please feel free to do that. If you don't want to turn your microphone on, just give me a thumbs down and I'll go to the next person. If you, if you are willing to share, I just would love to hear kind of your perspective, how you kind of view heading into this school year in terms of your family and your child. And just feel free to share kind of your perspective a little bit as to some of the thoughts that are, that are relevant to you and on your mind in the moment. So we'll go to, we'll go to some easy ones. I actually saw Jacob Garrick, are you still on there Jacob? You want to give me some of your thoughts since you're a parent and a teacher?
Yeah. Uh, I'm not sure what exactly we're doing. No. I mean, we kind of have an idea, but yeah, it's going to be interesting balancing the two girls. One at Robert Frost and one, you know, at Mark Twain as well, doing my stuff. So, um, you know, we're just going to kind of take it day by day and just, it sounds like the Edge Newity's lined up pretty well with a kind of a day by day. So we're going to just kind of roll it out, see how it goes, man.
Nice. Are, do you, do you have, what are maybe some of your concerns, I guess? Obviously juggling the time management piece, it sounds like is, is kind of the biggest one. Are there other concerns that are, that are, you know, that you and your wife are just kind of have fresh in your mind?
I think with Emma being, you know, from kindergarten and only barely half a year of kindergarten, you know, we find, found reading with her at night that she's lost a lot of the sight words and just stuff that we just need to, we as parents need to keep up on. So I don't know if there's kindergarten sight word lists, posts, or I don't, you know, something like that resources for those that missed that last three months of, of learn, I mean, we were learning, but you, you know.
It's not the same.
It's not the same. So, yeah. So we're, we're seeing a little regression as far as that goes, but yeah, I don't know. I'm just, yeah, we'll see how it starts off, how she starts off the year. So.
Yeah. Well, and, and I would probably say like, obviously you're not alone. I mean, we have a number of kiddos who experienced that last year regardless of what the grade was. And so I think that's a great question. And I think making sure that parents are getting the resources that they, that they need to help, help their kiddos. And you know, whether it's reading at night or just kind of good routines or, you know, how do we make up some of that time lost? As well as, you know, try to learn in this new year using the new curriculum. So those are all great questions and, and you know, our teachers are going to have a little bit of direction and kind of help that process along. So I appreciate you guys sharing that. Thank you, Jacob.
Yeah.
Um, how about, let's see, how about Melissa Gangler? Melissa, what are some of your thoughts heading into this school year for your kiddo?
I actually have the same situation as Jacob. I have a kindergartner going into first and one going into third. So much of the same. I guess I still wasn't quite clear on the online versus the hybrid and the teacher. So is the teacher for the online going to be like a Mark Twain teacher? Or is that something not related to the district?
Yeah. Great question. No. So to answer that specifically, parents have the two options that they're going to choose. You're going to choose online, which means that you are choosing to keep your child basically at home or off-site the entire school year. So that you have a little bit of control over, over, hey, we might be in person. And then I'm not comfortable sending my kiddo to school. I would like to keep my kiddo home because I have more control over that situation. Or if there's a closure, then the kids all go home and then, you know, things improve and we allow the kids to come back. So to avoid that, you know, we're in school, we're out of school, we're in school, we're out of school. Parents can choose to have some control over that situation and choose online the entire school year. The curriculum is, is the Edge Newity that, that we had discussed. So they basically for oversimplifying here, but lesson one at, at home, all the way through lesson, whatever, 25. It doesn't matter if you've chosen online or if you've chosen hybrid, the curriculum will be exactly the same. And so the curriculum is intended to help a little bit more in terms of the continuity of the learning, whether we're onsite or offsite. Parents that are choosing the hybrid, if the state allows us to have in-person learning, we're going to bring some of those kiddos back in an A B block schedule, put them in front of teachers. If we do happen to have a shutdown, then we would go back to distance learning. But the option exists for kiddos to be in front of a teacher, which obviously is more beneficial. But yeah, the, you know, like choosing, choosing that and keeping your, keeping your kiddo at home, you know, is going to, is going to help with kind of that consistency piece, I guess. In terms of the teachers. In terms of the teachers, the, we're going to wait and see how many students actually selected or how many families actually selected online. Because that teacher will be a Silver Falls School District teacher. So that, that, that's one thing that we know. We do not necessarily know if that teacher, for example, for you guys is going to be a Mark Twain teacher. Or it may be like your kiddo is going to be in first grade. That it may be a teacher from another school in the district, teaching a group of families, kids who chose online school. So it will be a Silver Falls School District teacher, but it may not necessarily be a Mark Twain teacher. And then hybrid teachers, for families that chose hybrid, those will be Mark Twain teachers and you will be assigned to a classroom. So does that, does that help with kind of who the teacher is necessarily, Melissa?
Yes, that does. I listened to one for Robert Frost and that's kind of, they said, oh, there'll be an online teacher for the online only. But I guess I never was clear on like who that would be. Cause some parents were asking about, you know, if they switched mid-year and wondering if it'd be the same teacher. And so that's kind of how it got brought up.
Yep. So to answer your question, it, my understanding at this point is when families select online, they'll be assigned to an online teacher that will be a Silver Falls School District teacher for your grade level. Now it could be a blended situation too. It may be a second grade teacher that's teaching first and second graders together as an online group. But it will be a Silver Falls School District teacher. And they're actually in the process of selecting those teachers right now. So they, they basically asked who was interested in teaching online. And so we'll make some determinations and you will find out at least from Mark Twain, where your, where your kiddo is assigned and what the teacher's name is on the 28th of August.
Okay. And then one last question. Today I received a school supply list for Robert Frost. And you know, it looked like stuff that was kind of geared towards the online, you know, like dry erase board with dry erase markers. Is something like that going to be put out for like Mark Twain kids too?
Yeah, I'm going to, I'm going to wait on that. I talked a little bit about that last week. I'm going to kind of push the pause button on that until I get an opportunity to talk to my teachers. And, and we give them some time to look at the online curriculum and find out what the base supply list is. I just want to, you know, I just want to make sure we have as much information as possible because I don't want families in a position where they have to get a whole bunch of supplies. And then if we do have special projects or something along those lines, trying to figure out exactly what the, what the supply list is. I think there's some basic things, you know, colored markers, pencils, scissors, kind of things like that that are, that are obviously your basic supplies. But further than that, I actually last week said, we're going to push pause on, you know, typically we do the, you know, the $30 for supplies for the school year. So we've kind of pushed the pause button on that right now until we get a little bit more information. It can give families a little bit more direction. All right. Let's, let's go to, uh, let's go to another one. I'm actually, I'm just cold calling here. So how about Callie? Yeah.
Oh, and there's a couple of questions in the chat room. So do you want to? Is if we return to school and only half the kids want to return in person, will there be opportunity to do full-time four days a week for those kids that return to school?
I think for those kids, when they return to school, we'll, first of all, we'll get some direction from the state and then the district will decide how best to serve those kids. So if it is a small enough number of kids that fit within the requirements in terms of in-person learning, I think we're going to make a decision to get as many kids as we, as we can in front of teachers. Yeah. And that's going to be a very fluid situation. I, I don't even know where we land. I know that there's some metrics that we have to hit as a county. And then the one additional piece for Silver Falls School District is the requirement actually, because our district falls in two counties, Clackamas County and Marion County. We actually hit to have to hit the metrics for both counties before any of our schools can allow, can go to the next phase of allowing in-person schooling.
Right.
What was the other question?
The other one is, and she said, my banter last week about the kindergartners and how long will be expected to be on a computer each day? Who knows? That's OD release minute guidelines, but you know how that was translating in our district?
Yeah, that, um, I, I don't have that document right in front of me. However, I, I want to say, you know what, let me, let me look that up while we, while we keep going. I, let me call on, uh, let me call on somebody and let me go look that up. So I give you the exact number. But I was going to go to, I was going to go to Callie Maxwell. Callie, you want to share kind of what's, what's on your mind heading into this school year while I look that document up?
Sorry, I had to figure out how to turn my mic back on.
That's okay.
Took me a minute. Um, so one of the things that we are doing is I'm a nurse and I'm actually going to be quitting my job to stay home with the kids to be able to do this. And yeah, so we made that decision. It was a very, very tough decision to, to, to put my career on hold to be able to do this. But we feel like it's the right decision. But the thing that I, I was talking to a couple of other nurses, I guess this, this has kind of been on my, my mind lately is I was talking to some other nurses that are in different school districts and I'm not going to tell which ones they're in. But they have not heard anything from their school districts on what they're doing. They haven't gotten emails. The school district, district hasn't made decisions on what they're going to do yet. There's no plan. There's no website yet. And so I guess I kind of wanted to express, express my appreciation on having a plan and having kind of like a path that we're going on. Because I think it's really helped me to be able to make the decision to, to put in my three-week notice at work and be able to start planning for this. Because some of these nurses, they just don't know what they're going to do. Cause and they can't tell, they can't tell work what they're going to do because they don't have any decisions. So I'm, I'm, I want to kind of compliment you guys and everybody involved because I've, I can't imagine, you know, what parents are feeling in other school districts when they don't, I mean, they're not getting any guidance or any, um, any input on, on what they're going to do. So I just wanted to say thank you and that we really appreciate it.
Awesome. You're very welcome. Thank you for sharing that. Yeah. And I think, you know, in listening to our new superintendent and just direction from the district office for, for our whole district, number one, trying to focus on, you know, all children and making sure that we've got a, a plan in place that addresses everything. But then, but then also trying to, you know, make sure that we are available, that you can, you can call the school. You can email us that we're having these weekly town halls to give you guys a voice and, and ask those questions. Because I think the more information you have and the more, uh, the better understanding you have of what the plan is and what your child can expect, I think that, I think that sets some minds at ease a little bit. It's, it's going to be tough and unfortunately the, the entire world is, is dealing with something we've never dealt with before. But if we can give you as much information as possible, try to be as consistent as possible and, and make sure that, you know, we relay that, you know, we're, we're really trying to do what's in the best interest of the kiddos. I think, I think that's all we can ask of, you know, our teachers, our staff, our district. So I do appreciate you sharing that. Thank you very much. I mean, going back to that question, it looks, I, I can't find that document exactly. And, uh, but I, but I believe it's a little less than 12 hours a, a week in a five days. So the Edge Newity curriculum is intended to deliver five days of instruction for the student. And it comes out to be about a little less than 12 hours of instruction for the week. And then obviously that's broken up, especially at the younger kids age, we break that up and give them a lot of breaks and make sure we chunk that out into nice, small bite-sized pieces for the kiddos. But, um, you know, I think that we're going to provide some schedules to help families set up a structured plan. We will work with your learning coach on that plan for the kiddos and make sure the kiddos are making progress. But it, you know, it's going to be, it's going to be important that you use a schedule that works for you. So one of the thoughts that I was thinking is we have, we have, we have two concepts that we're going to be rolling out to parents. One is called synchronized contacts or synchronized communication or, or, um, a touch from a teacher. And that is a live two-way communication where the person is on the phone, the person is in a chat room, which may not be relevant to these younger kids. That's more for like a middle school or a high school kiddo. Or it's a, it's a live video chat. And so they can ask a question, get an answer. It's live. And then asynchronous contact, which could be, you know, you, it's an email or a message or you ask a question and get a follow-up a little bit later. Or, you know, something that's, it could be a video that's posted that the kiddo can watch. And so there, there are time constraints for, not constraints is not the right word. There are, uh, there are times where you're going to have both synchronized and asynchronous contacts with your teacher. And so it's really, it's kind of about, you know, in terms of direct instruction, whether it's from the curriculum or from a teacher or through the learning coach or maybe an assistant at our building is, is in communication. It's about 50% of direct instruction and 50% of practice or kind of supporting activities. And the teachers, once we assign a teacher to your student, the teachers will give you more information, provide you with some sample schedules and help you kind of take a look at what actually the time commitment is. And then beyond that, we really want to make sure that we're communicating with families that we, we want to be able to support you. So if it's working for your child, but maybe your child needs more, we want to try to help problem solve with you a little bit so that we can give your child more. If it's maybe not working for your child and we're not seeing the growth that we, we would like to see, we need to kind of try to reevaluate and find out how better to, how, how better we can support. Maybe it means more synchronized activity. Maybe it means, you know, the videos are, are, are something that is working really, really well. But there are going to be some times throughout the school year where we really dive in and try to find out what is working well and we need to do more of that, what is not working well and we need to limit that out. So I think it's going to be a, you know, it's going to be a lot of teamwork, both from folks at home as well as our staff here at school. Not always the teacher, but it could be an assistant or maybe a point person that you have so that you feel like you have somebody that you can contact, ask questions, get a response in a timely manner so that your child's learning is not delayed. Okay. Does that help on? Does that help on uh, hopefully that helps on kind of the time? Um, five days a week of instruction, even though you won't be in person, some of that could be chunked out through the weekend. Maybe they do like thirty minutes on a Saturday, maybe thirty minutes on a Sunday evening or something like that. So there's no perfect formula, whatever works best for your kiddo. Oh, awesome. Yeah. Uh eleven hours and thirty minutes that ended up going in the chat room. Thank you for finding that. I knew I mentioned that last week. K through three, eleven hours and forty minutes. Thank you, Hunter. Um, how about uh Nicole? Any other questions that we need to? Hit. I saw a couple of things in the chat room there. Think we've got them. We got them covered. All right, let's um, let's see. Let's go to How about uh Frank? Is it Gauntz is the last name? Would you care to share? Give me a little perspective. What's what's on your mind there, Frank?
Um, no, you've you've done a great job answering questions. I really appreciate it. And then everyone who who uh talked previously kind of summed up my questions. Just a matter about juggling time. So I appreciate everything you guys are doing. Thank you.
Awesome. Nope, you're very, you're very welcome. Uh, let's go ahead and go on to a different one. How about uh, how about uh Jessica Wiltsey. Jessica, would you, would you care to share with the group? What's what's uh, what's on your mind? I'm giving, I'm giving. Oh, shoot, trying to access the microphone. Jessica, I'm gonna come back to you. I'll let you work on that. I'll try to come back to you, okay? How about uh, how about Carly Sitchley? Carly Sitchley, what's on your mind? What would you like to share this evening?
Um, so I guess one of the things that we've been thinking about, we have a um second incoming second grader who had such a great um kinder kinder and first grade experience and really love her teachers. And so um now we have an incoming kindergartner and just thinking about that relationship building and how it's gonna be so hard to do virtually. Um, it just kind of makes me feel a little sad for his experience this year.
Yeah. And we talked a little bit about that last week. Um, you know, one parent had kind of asked me about like you know, obviously, if we do get to the point where we have in-person learning, you know, can the kids high five? Can the kids give hugs? And you know, what's that gonna look like? You know, and unfortunately, you're absolutely right. Like this is, this is a really, really tough time because what the kids thrive on is that you know, that that interaction, you know, being able to communicate. Being able to share their thoughts and feelings in an environment uh with no fear. Um, feeling safe, having lots of adults that they know care about them. And you know, when we're in distance learning, that's that's through a computer. It's very impersonal. It can feel very sterile. Um, I can assure you that that will be a big topic for us in our building to try to find little ways where the kids know that there's that there are more adults that care about them and that are interested in their success than just the the one teacher or the one assistant that is assigned kind of to their classroom. So that's gonna be a challenge for us, but but I know my staff and I know what's important to them and those relationships are very important to them. It's gonna be, you know, it's gonna be hard for the kindergartners coming in and I, you know, I really feel for, you know, the kiddos that are just starting their educational uh path and uh the and it's it's gonna be tough because we don't have that. Um, so I don't have a great answer for you, but I know that that's gonna be one of the charges that I'll ask of my teachers is how can we connect with these kiddos? So um
Yeah, thanks.
Yeah, absolutely. Um.
In the chat room.
All right, let's do it. Go ahead. What do we got?
So will teachers be looking at the progression on the new program? Whether it be tests on the program, make sure hitting, we're hitting the marks that should be or might or there might be sending packets, tests home through email. Um, worry about getting behind, especially on reading, which we struggle at home, but did go to school.
Yeah, no, uh, great question. So so two things that we're gonna be able to measure your child's growth is number one, through the through the assessments or the or the checkpoints, if you will, in the curriculum, in the Edge Newity curriculum. And then the second thing is that we are going to assess children uh using the STAR or district assessment yeah, in both math and reading. We have not been given direction as to how we're going to do that, but we are going to try really hard to potentially buy appointment. If if we're allowed to do that, or we're gonna have to work through learning coaches to be able to have kiddos take that assessment because it is gonna be really important that we have some checkpoints. We have some ways to find out. You know, how how is the kiddo doing? Or should we be concerned? Are they on track? Are they accelerated? You know, what? What what exactly are we looking at? And so we need some ways to be able to compare apples to apples. So those are two ways right now that I can tell you. The checkpoints in the curriculum as well as the district assessment STAR for us and um we will be doing STAR three times throughout the entire year. We'll try to get a beginning of the year. We'll try to get a mid-year check and we'll try to get an end of the year check. So at least have something to compare student progress to. Um, so that's that's kind of our game plan for uh, from the academic standpoint. Let's see. How about um, how about Cindy Lampa? Cindy, would you care to share and give me some of your thoughts? What's on your mind for heading into this school year? All right, may maybe we'll we'll go to a different one. I didn't see her coming off.
Mr. Cots, I think I think if you can hear me, I'm ready to go.
All right, yeah, no, go ahead. I'm ready.
So this is Garrett, uh husband of Jessica. So one, one thing that we've been learning about and I apologize because I had to restart in order to get the microphone going. So if you've already uh explained it, my apologies, but
No problem.
As as far as the um, the in-person uh learning. Uh, one is who the district stands on that. And then also the um it it the synchronization you were talking about, uh as far as having the videos versus balancing uh those videos that'll be available for for at-home learning. Uh, my wife and I are both working from home, thank goodness, you know, that's a that's a blessing. And again, appreciate uh everything you guys are doing. Uh, but it is, it is a challenge to work from home and to balance that full-time job. Uh, you know, with a young one. So just wanted to see what the options were as far as how much live learning there's going to be versus how many videos are gonna be available uh as in on-demand uh to balance that learning.
Yeah, and I and I can't give you an exact number on kind of how many videos. I think I think what our teachers are really gonna try to do is they're really gonna try to make sure that as we move along in the curriculum, move from, you know, let's say checkpoint one all the way through to whatever, whatever uh, you know, number-wise throughout the curriculum as they progress, making sure that the kids understand what those concepts concepts are. And so some students may do well with the video. Some students may need that you know, that live or that synchronized uh connection with the teacher. Um. You know, I I do know that some families are partnering together and uh and and kind of having a learning coach and maybe there's two or three families that are pooling resources together to try to make sure, you know, students are maybe, you know, learning in a little group or a little pod or, you know, however, the the kiddos kind of run with their with their friends. So um, I think it's gonna vary depending on the kiddo, but on paper, in an ideal world, on paper, it's about, it's about half of some sort of live or synchronized connection with the teacher or or staff member at the school. Um versus versus uh asynchronous, which might be a recorded video or, you know, something that's just something that uh I'm trying to think of what are some of the other examples of the asynchronous, but basically, you know, basically you know, not a live connection, but more of just a a one-way connection, a checkpoint or something like that. So it's about fifty fifty is kind of the way they're writing it down uh on paper. Um, but I but I feel like in our building, because the kids are younger, that that could change drastically from kid to kid. If a kid needs more, that's our responsibility to make adjustments and make sure we give that kiddo more, whether it's tips a little bit more to the synchronized or it tips a little bit more to the asynchronous. In terms of the in-person, the, you know, if you choose, if you choose the hybrid model. When and and if the state allows us or our or our counties meet the metrics to allow kids to come to school and and you know, we're crossing our fingers that they're gonna allow us to bring kids into school in that block capacity. We're looking at about half capacity. So a typical classroom of like uh first graders, let's say, is, you know, twenty-five kiddos. So we're taking a taking a look at maybe twelve or thirteen kids would come in, group A. Um, they would receive instruction from the teacher, but they would still follow along the curriculum, whatever checkpoint they are in the curriculum. And then when they're away from the teacher, they continue with the same curriculum, but they're working at home kind of in that distance model while the group B then comes to school. So trying to do the very best we can to at least have some in-person, even though it's not gonna be it's far from ideal, let's say, because obviously every day for every kid is our goal. But that's kind of what that hybrid looks like, basically in every other kind of a split model or a half-capacity um in-person learning.
Perfect. Thank you.
Yeah, you're very welcome. You bet. Uh, Nicole, any other questions that I can?
Um, so there was a last question here about the hybrid model. So I I think you probably answered it, but and just in case, it's from Nikki. And I'm not sure if she has additional questions, but it was about if they're continuing the Edge Newity lessons while in classrooms with the teachers or if they'd move to the traditional curriculum curriculum.
Yeah, so the entire school year, the entire district, K through twelve is using the curriculum and and that name, that curriculum is called Edge Newity. And so everybody is using that curriculum, obviously by grade level. So kindergarten is gonna look different than third grade, than fifth grade, than than uh twelfth grade or high school kids. So the the reason that we went with that and that was a purchase that the district made is so that in this year of, we might have in-person, we might have to have kids be at home in the in this, in this year of inconsistent in-person education, the one consistent thing that we can guarantee from the very beginning of the school year is the curriculum. So we want to make sure that we have a viable curriculum for the kids. And so that's, so whether you're hybrid um or online, the curriculum is gonna be the same. Let's uh, let's go ahead and call on let's, let's see here. I had somebody I was gonna call on. How about uh, I how about Fred Hepner? Fred, would you, would you care to share your thoughts with the group? Maybe?
He's asked a few on the chat room, so he might answer them all.
Okay, sounds good. Well, we can go to uh, we can go to another one. How about um? Let's see here. How about Kim Bachtler? Kim, is there anything you you'd like to share with the group? Okay, I won't, I won't wait. I won't wait much longer than. We're at about uh, we're at about six forty-five tonight. Um, I I always try to uh kind of cut the main group off at uh six forty-five. And um, if you have a question, you'd like to talk to me or wait till some folks uh log off. You're welcome to do that. I will continue to record. Um, but uh, at this point in the meeting, I'd like to go ahead and allow folks to sign off. I appreciate you guys being here this evening. Um, encourage you to bring a friend next time or share with uh, with maybe one of your kiddo's friends and and bring them to one of our town halls. But any questions you guys have, uh Nicole and Letty are uh are are in the office. Feel free to give us a call. Feel free to uh email us. There is information on the district website as well as the Mark Twain webpage. And um, if you uh, if if you would like to go back and take a look at the recording of the town hall. Um, our Silver Falls School District YouTube channel is just S F S D official. And uh, everything's gonna be posted up there. So um, I appreciate you guys. I got one more question. I see you, Amy. I'll respond to that in just a second. Um, so I'll go ahead and let folks sign off. I'm gonna answer Amy's question and uh, hopefully I see some faces next week. But if you guys have anything, don't hesitate to reach out. Thank you so much for joining us this evening. All right, Amy, I'm coming to you. Amy's question was will you be setting any screen time maximums for your staff or instructional time? So Amy, on the on the curriculum, which we just have a few modules that we've really been kind of starting to uh, starting to train on. The staff hasn't seen, with the exception of some demos, the staff really hasn't seen the curriculum at all. So uh, we're gonna kind of wait and see what the, you know, what the curriculum, I guess, is is advising us as staff to find out what type of uh you know, where our time is gonna be set in terms of in, you know, in-person or synchronized time with our with our students. And so right now, it's once a week, once a week uh per they call it per subject. I don't know exactly what that's gonna translate to for our for our littles. But I know that in addition to the teacher, that we're gonna have a point person uh for each classroom to uh, you know, to help maybe have some smaller groups or maybe help with some very specific skills. And so, you know, once a week right now, live is what we're talking about. But again, the curriculum is not intended to be uh to be delivered completely by the teacher. It's gonna be a guide on the side model. So um we're definitely gonna be recording some videos, trying to uh probably theme a lot of things to make sure that we capture their attention and uh and and pique their interest. And then we will have some synchronized time, obviously, which uh, you know, which would be live video or whatever works for the family. So does that uh?
She says it clarifies.
Yeah.
Per day.
So right now, right now, the language and uh, and I and I actually have this question now for some clarification when we meet as an admin group. It's once per week. Uh, once per week per subject is kind of, is kind of the way that it's worded specifically. Last year, we tried to go a minimum of twice a week, live or synchronized. And so right now, it's once per week per subject. So if we do math or if we do reading or maybe we do science, um we're gonna try to have a synchronized, um a synchronized time. The the minimum right now is once per week per subject. And so we'll get a little bit of clarification and make sure we communicate that to families. How's that? Does that, does that answer it? I'm watching the chat so you can chat it in there. Okay, thanks, Amy. Uh, let's see. I think that's about it. We're good. Well, again, I appreciate you guys being on here. Thank you so much. And I'm gonna go ahead and uh sign off. I'll stay on until the last person's on. So if you have another question or want to wait, feel free. Otherwise, we'll see you later. We'll see you next Monday and I'll be on Monday at noon. Thanks, everybody.